Dean, will you please lead us in a flag salute?
Thank you much, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Dean. Roll call, please, Siana.
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long?
Here. Thank you. Now would be the time for oral comments from the public. If anyone has zoomed in and wants to say anything, which I don't see any extra people on our site. There is a link and a phone number that you can call on the screen if you would like to address the council for any reason. We haven't been receiving any comments, so we'll leave that up there for another few seconds, and then we'll move on to our consent calendar. And if anyone does call in, we move on. Siana will give us some sort of signal, and you'll be able to talk. We do want to hear from our public, and this has made it really difficult to do so, so. Let's go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. We have three items: City Council minutes from September 21st, report of disbursements, and the authorization of destruction of selected finance department files, resolution 2020-34. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
No.
Seeing none or need a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Siana?
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to our first city council business item is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Murphy Industrial Coatings for coating services for the anaerobic digester maintenance project, resolution 2020-35. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I will be providing the staff report, and then we also have Kevin Carr on the meeting. If there's any questions that I can't answer, he's our project manager for this project. Staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Murphy Industrial Coatings for coating services for the anaerobic digester maintenance project and adopt resolution 2020-35. The wastewater treatment plant has one anaerobic digester that was installed in 2006. The digester reduces solids levels in the system and converts solids into methane gas for electrical generation. The biosolids that are remaining from the anaerobic digestion process are converted into Class A compost after they are taken out of the digesters and then given away to the community. In order for the digester to function as intended, it's necessary to drain and clean it on a periodic basis, typically three to 10 years. We've gone 13 years without having completed this essential maintenance. Wastewater staff has worked to bypass the digester for the cleaning, inspection, and coating, and that's a pretty large task that our staff had to do, and they had to figure out a way to take that out of the system because we don't have a redundancy. Due to the upcoming winter weather, the interior will be coated first because it's not dependent on the outside climate, so that the digester can be put back into service. And the exterior of the digester lid will be put out to bid in early spring as a separate project. Due to the short duration available to complete the project, they need to put the digester back in service in the limited number of specialty companies that complete this type of work. Staff is requesting that the council find us in the public interest to award the project based on competitive quotes rather than a formal bidding process. Section 2.50.70D of the Fortuna Municipal Code states its accounts council may elect to dispense with formal competitive bidding if the council finds it to be in the public interest. Staff requested quotes from three companies that provide this specialized coating service. The lowest response of quote for the interior coating came from Murphy Industrial Coatings in the amount of $227,182. And the next closest quote was from F.D. Thomas in the amount of $273,436. Staff is requesting the council find it is in the best interest of the public to enter in the contract with Murphy Industrial Coatings for the interior coating of the anaerobic digester. To date, this project is included in the fiscal year 2020-21 budget in the amount of $500,000. Previous expenditures for engineering, cleaning, inspection, and the setting up of scaffolding so the interior can be coated is $230,000. That leaves $270,000 in the current fiscal year, which is more than enough to cover the bid price in a contingency, a 10% contingency. Therefore, staff is requesting that the council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Murphy Industrial Coatings for the anaerobic digester maintenance project with a maximum contract amount of $249,900, which includes a 10% contingency in that the council adopt resolution 2020-35. A copy of the engineer's recommendation, SHN Engineering, was the engineer record for this project, but that's attached to the staff report as well as a detailed breakdown of the quotes that the city received. We're there. With that, I'd hand it back to council and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Merritt. Siana, if you want to put up the number for people to call in if they have any public comment, we can do that while the council has any questions.
I'm going to, and I also wanted to point out that somebody did join the meeting. It's a number 599-4336. And the person doesn't have to speak, but I just wanted to remind them that if they wanted to, they're on their phone, they can hit star nine, and it will give me an indicator that they'd like to make a public comment. Right now, that individual is muted.
Thank you, Siana. Does anyone have any questions for Merritt?
I just have one kind of... For the benefit of the public, this project is a planned, scheduled maintenance project, and it funded out of wastewater reserves, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. This project is being funded out of Fund 560 sewer reserves, and it's a planned project that was in our capital improvement program.
I didn't see it in the staff report, but I kind of thought it was. But just for the benefit of others that may listen or be listening later, I just wanted to bring that in.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
All right, hearing no phones, no signals from Siana, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Murphy Industrial Coatings for digestive coating services for... I'm sorry, my computer's all blurred now. I can't see the rest of it.
I'll finish it. For digester coating services for the anaerobic digester maintenance project, adopt resolution 2020-35, and read by title only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Siana?
I muted myself.
Resolution 2020-35, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Murphy Industrial Coatings for tank coating services for the anaerobic digester maintenance project without formal competitive bidding. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is administrative citation ordinance, second reading for ordinance 2020-745.
Mayor Long? Our city attorney, Ryan Plots, is in the meeting, and he will provide the staff report for this item.
Thanks, Merritt. Good evening. As the council will recall, during the last meeting, we introduced and conducted a first reading of the proposed ordinance to allow our local enforcement officials to issue administrative citations for violations of the Fortuna Municipal Code. As we discussed, an administrative citation is a written order to pay a fine to the city for a violation of the Fortuna Municipal Code and is a noncriminal optional alternative to criminal prosecution. The ordinance includes the amounts of the fines for violations that are deemed an infraction and gives the council discretion to set the fines for violations that are misdemeanor violations under our current code. I'm happy to stop there and answer any questions that the council may have.
Siana, if you could put the number to call up on the screen again for us, please. Does anyone from the council have any comments while we're waiting for any of the public to call in?
I have a question for councillor. Once we do the second on this, is it going to take 30 days before we actually can apply it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none and hearing no one from the public, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would love to make a motion. I'd make a motion to hold a second reading and adopt ordinance 2020-745, and read it by title only.
I'll second that.
You guys are slow tonight.
Sorry.
Ordinance 2020-745, in ordinance of the City of Fortuna, adding chapter 1.09 to Title I of the Fortuna Municipal Code to provide for the imposition of administrative fines and penalties and administrative procedures to govern the imposition, enforcement, collection, and administrative review by the City of administrative fines and penalties. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you, Siana. Moving on to our next item, it's cannabis violation ordinance, the second reading of ordinance 2020-746. Staff report, please. Merritt, you're muted.
Ryan Plots, our city attorney, will be providing the staff report for this item as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Merritt. And this is a corollary to the action the council just took. As I mentioned, the council has discretion to set the amount of fines for violations deemed a misdemeanor. And under our existing municipal code, violations of our cannabis regulations are declared a misdemeanor. And so the purpose of the ordinance is to set the fine at the rate of $1,000 per day for each day that the violation continues unabated. Stop there and answer any questions that the council may have.
Siana, if you will put our phone number up again, please. Does anyone have any questions for Ryan?
I have a question regarding procedural. Like, is there going to be a complaint followed by a first attempt to contact the offender? And then a certain timeframe to come into compliance? And then the fines are set? I mean, is there a... What's the letter of the law on that?
Yeah, so the previous ordinance provides the procedure. And generally, outside of the cannabis world, it would be first met with a notice to cure for building and property-related violations. They have a reasonable amount of time, based on the nature of the violation, to cure the violation before the fine would be imposed. For cannabis-related violations, the local enforcement official has the ability to immediately impose the fines since the conduct is otherwise illegal. And that's at the discretion of the enforcement official. It's not mandatory. But there's also that relief in the landlord-tenant context where if the landlord can prove that he or she was not aware and could not have been aware of the violation, that a reasonable amount of time to cure the tenant's conduct is required to be provided by the enforcement official.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Stanfield, I might just add that, you know, really, the intention of doing this is we did have some properties where, you know, we did have a violation. We asked them to cure them only to go back and then find out that they had started back up again. And so really, what we were trying to do with this ordinance is dissuade repeat offenders. And our goal with ALCOU compliance is to try to get voluntary compliance. So, you know, this is one where we don't want to have our officers going back multiple times to the same locations with a potential $100 fine that we'd have to pursue through a difficult and expensive process. So that was the impetus for this change and modification and to save the time of our officers of going back to repeat offenders.
Okay.
Brian? I don't know if I understood you right, but did you say that the landlord would get the citation and not the renter?
Potentially both. But from the purposes of meaning the property, meaning ultimately the landlord would be responsible, the landlord has the option to submit evidence to the city that he or she was not aware of the underlying conduct and that the lease agreement prohibits the unlawful cultivation of cannabis on the property. And in that case, the landlord would be given an opportunity to cure while the tenant could be cited immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Hearing no one from the public, we will close public comment. If we have no other questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold the second reading to adopt ordinance 2020-746, and read by title only.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Siana?
Ordinance 2020-746, in ordinance of the City of Fortuna, amending section 17.06.120.5 of chapter 17.06 to Title 17 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to provide for the imposition of administrative fines for violations. Councilmember Glazer?
I strongly support this, and it's a yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our last item of business, is the sale of real property located at 320 Main Street, Fortuna.
So just one comment before I hand it over to our city attorney, who can kind of share some of the details of the transaction. I just wanted to remind the council and the public that the city became an owner of this property through a business loan fund that it did for a previous restaurant at 320 Main Street. And really, the intention of that loan fund was to get an operating and thriving and successful business into that location. So we do have Double D stakes, and Deborah Chisholm has been renting that property from the city, and they've been there for a few years now, and they are operating a successful business. So we're very pleased that she has stepped forward and made the city an offer for that property. And I think this is consistent with the city's original goal of providing a loan on that property that ultimately led to ownership. So I think with this transaction that where, you know, the city is successful of having a business in the old Parlato's building at 320 Main Street. So with that, I'll hand it over to our city attorney to summarize the action of running tonight.
Thanks, Merritt. So the action tonight is actually to approve the close of escrow on the terms previously authorized by the council. The purchase and sale agreement has been signed, which is attached as Exhibit A to the staff report, and escrow has been opened. The preliminary title report has been issued, and Ms. Chisholm doesn't have any objections to the title report. The material terms of the sale are: the purchase price is going to be $375,000. That is payable by way of a $15,000 down payment and a city-carried promissory note in the amount of $360,000. The promissory note is secured by a first prior deed of trust, which will have a lender's title insurance policy ensuring that the city is in senior and first position with respect to that purchase money note. The loan will accrue interest at the rate of 5% per year. And although the note is amortized over a 30-year period, the term of the note is five years, meaning that during the first five years, Ms. Chisholm will make monthly payments of principal and interest in the amount of $1,932.56. And a balloon payment will be due in the remaining amount of principal and interest of $330,583.29 at the end of the five-year term. There's no prepayment penalty, so Ms. Chisholm may. And the city has encouraged her to seek commercial lending to refinance the debt over a longer period, up to potentially 30 years, at her option to avoid that five-year balloon payment. The sale of the property is as is and includes a comprehensive release of the city for any conditions relating to the property. And as Merritt noted, she is a current tenant of the property and so is well aware of the condition of the property. And there was a limited due diligence period that we've... That has now expired. So at this time, escrow is just about in a position to close. Escrow will be preparing the necessary grantee and the deed of trust. I have already prepared the promissory note, which is attached to the purchase and sale agreement, to be used as part of the transaction. And if the council approves and adopts the resolution tonight, it will approve the close of escrow and also authorize the city manager to act as the city's authorized agent with respect to signing documents and closing escrow.
And just two things I might add. Although, you know, there is no direct fiscal impact, there is a fiscal impact, which is the city will be relieved of maintenance responsibility. That'll become the responsibility of the owner, so we won't have ongoing maintenance costs. And then the city will also have the proceeds from the sale to invest in the encouragement of other businesses within the city. So it'll free up these funds for asset.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for either Ryan or Merritt?
Yes, ma'am. This is Dean. I know we've been lax on actually doing what we've been embracing through the city of a sidewalk next to where the new facility was built, where the bowling alley was. They put in a sidewalk, but unfortunately, it ends right there at the corner of the property for the Double Ds. So will we, in a timely manner, require her to do a sidewalk? Or are we going to waive that?
So that would really, with any building permit, if she decides to do an improvement or an expansion, then that would trigger some of the normal requirements of building permit, like a sidewalk or upgrading ADA spaces, things like that. So that would be the property owner's responsibility, not the city's. It doesn't prevent the city from doing that if the city so desired. But right now, that's not anything that's being contemplated by the city to do that. It would be the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Siana, will you put our phone number up again, please? If anyone from the public has any comments, now is the time to join our meeting or call in. Seeing no public comment come in, we will close public comment. We need a motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-36, and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Siana?
Resolution 2020-36, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna authorizing the disposition by sale of the real property located at 320 Main Street, Fortuna, California, in a manner consistent with the terms of the purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the city manager to act as the authorized agent of the city. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you for all your hard work on that, Merritt. It's been a long time coming, so I'm glad to see we are finally making progress. Our next item is our city manager's report.
Okay, so I just have a few items for my city manager's report. I'll review the upcoming meeting dates. Our next city council meeting will be on October 19th. Our next plan, and that'll be at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Our next planning commission meeting will be on October 13th, also at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Our next Measure E meeting will be December 15th. And then our next Rona Community Recreation Park District meeting is on October 7th. Just a few items to report tonight. One, I wanted to give an update on the Jameson Creek Culver. If any of the council's been out there to take a look lately, you'll see that the road grade is being brought back up. They're working on installing a new water line and putting utilities there, so we're getting close to having that up to grade. They'll be pouring a headwall later this week. And then after that headwall sits for some time, we can continue to backfill the upstream end. So that's proceeding well, and we still expect to finish and have the roadway up to grade and back in service around the end of October. We did receive some questions regarding Measure G and a request from council to put out the frequently asked question in the water bills. So that went out. The public, you know, the citizens in Fortuna should see a one-page flyer just with some frequently asked questions about what is Measure G? What, you know, it's stating it's a continuation of Measure E and giving the duration, et cetera. And then with some of the details on what the city supplemental sales tax is paid for in the past and what it would be spent on. So that was the first time that we've put in addition into our water bills in a separate standalone sheet. So I really appreciate the effort. Our finance department had to use a new folding machine we got with our new finance software to put that in. And so we exercised that. And I'd just like to thank our finance department for putting that together, making the few thousand copies of that, making sure that that all went well. And then just one more thing to report. I'll be meeting with Diana Rios of FBIT tomorrow, and we'll be looking at... I'll receive an update from FBIT, and we'll be continuing to look at ways that we can better work with them on their efforts. So that's all I have for my staff report.
Does anyone have any questions for Merritt? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to future agenda items. Anybody? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to council reports. Dean?
How many minutes you want me to talk?
Thirty-two seconds.
All right, all right. I think we're in a new era where the dedicated effort by everyone to try to recycle has come to an end. And I know we need to talk to recology to get a very candid and honest answer from them how they are addressing this. Since China closed their borders, technically did not accept anything from the United States until unless it fell through 100% mandate of what they wanted, you miles are considered, nothing's going to them. So it's going to stay in the United States. So at some point in time, I'd like to be able to have them come forward to give us an idea. We talked about, I talked about Prop 15, which is a definite no. And the reason is, is it attacks the Prop 13 that was passed in 1979, and it was started and supported by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers League. If anybody has any questions about why it's a no, please call me because you need to follow through and accept my guidance if you want to. I'm not going to talk any further, so I'll keep it short. God bless America. God bless our troops. And may we all get through this coronavirus safely, without any problems, and have the numbers stop going up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. Mike?
Well, it's been a slow period since the last council meeting. We've, the no HCOG meeting, it was before the prior council meeting. We do have a goal-setting meeting for this Friday for transit goals and our regional transportation plan. We are also... I've been working on Measure G in my private time and in between smoke, heat, dogs, and things like that, handing out flyers and knocking on doors and talking to people. And look forward to continuing that and look forward to a passage of Measure G. Their public that I've spoken to has been pretty positive on that. They've seen what has happened with the previous four years of funds. And I think they're happy with what's been going on. One thing I think I've found out is that everybody is ready to play baseball under the lights as soon as we can. So I hope that that happens soon, if anybody from the county's listening. So with that, I'll thank you and pass it over to Jeremy.
Thank you, Mike. Jeremy?
Let's see, I ask Director of the of FBIT to give me a little summary of things that have been going on. And she let me know that they had a downtown meeting the other day. And unfortunately, the Apple Harvest Festival has to be canceled. Clinton ends of, it will of course be open for business as usual, so please go and support our local business there. The health department's not issuing any permits for food booths, so really takes away those opportunities for different civic groups to have one of the biggest fundraisers of the year. So that's kind of a bummer. Due to COVID-19, they are canceling the trick-or-treat and trunk-or-treat for Halloween this year. Darn it. And they have been busy putting up fall decorations and appreciate the city's efforts to put up the fall banners on Main Street. Also, Redwood Village is working on how they can still have the lighted Christmas parade. But it won't, we won't have an open house downtown afterwards, so modified yet again because of COVID. That's all I really have to report for now on FBIT. I didn't have a Parks and Rec meeting since our last visit. And I don't have any other things to report on. I did want to say good job to the candidates that spoke today. I tuned in and watched as they took the six hard questions and did really well with them, so. Yeah, good job. That's it.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
Well, I'm going to follow up on what Mike was saying about passing out the flyers. Sue and I have been working one side of the street and the other side of the street, passing out flyers also. Also, and our biggest obstacle obstacle has been the new Halloween spiders that are all making webs right now. There's been a couple of houses that both of us refuse to go to because there's too many cobwebs to get to the house. But that's been keeping us busy. Measure G is very important to the city, so please read those brochures that you got in your mail. If you haven't gotten one, contact one of us. We have brochures that we can give you or give you any of the information that you need. That is very important for the city. Also, ballots went out today, so you should be getting those in the mail any day. You can either fill them out, put them back in the mail. There's a drop box at Ray's Food Place from the election office that you can put it in if you don't want to mail it and they'll pick it up from that drop box. Or you can take it down to the Veterans Building here in Fortuna. They will be open October 31st through May or through November 2nd, 8:00 to 4:00. And then they'll be open November 3rd, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And you can drop it off there, or if you need any assistance with your with your ballot, they'll give you assistance there. And that's all.
All right, thank you, Tammy.
So I did have a redact meeting via Zoom. We have gotten a new pot of money, which is about $4 million. And so since we are going to be able to give out more money, we approved reducing our existing loans from the eight to 10% that they are at now to 7% because by loading out the extra money, we will be making up enough in new interest to to make up the lost revenue for for reducing the interest rates and it will give everybody a better rate, less payments, and hopefully we'll have more interest in loans. But so far, our money is going out very well. We've got some really good loans, good collateral. And a redact just keeps doing what they do best, so. I did hear Merritt today that the school traffic from Ambrosini was backed up incredibly bad because of the Rona Ville Road closure. And I know there's nothing we can do about it until the project is finished, but I did have a couple of calls on that today.
Yeah, and you know, I'm not sure that it's specifically with the Rona Ville Road closure. I'm not, you know, we need to check in with them and see what their, you know, what they've changed. I think their pickup and drop-off time is there and I'm not sure if they have the busing. So, you know, one good thing is we didn't have traffic going both directions, so there is less traffic going through there. So I did notice that and I was aware of that and it's something that I'll reach out to them to see if we can alleviate. But I, again, I think they have a new process and we need to get a sense of what it is because they were extremely backed up today.
All right, thank you. So again, Measure G is incredibly important to the city and I hope that we are able to get information to all of you. Please read the 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 form that was in your water bill. And we have a Facebook page, Yes on G, which we are sharing information. And it's really important when, for the council members and the public, when I, when you see things shared regarding Measure G, please share them so that we can reach more people. Since we can't have our in-house city town hall type meetings, the only way we can get information out is social media and then all the walking that we're doing. And we do have several people walking and I really appreciate them taking their neighborhoods. We could use more help if anyone is so inclined and has a little bit of free time, even if you could take two or three streets, that would make a huge difference for us. I do have a few yard signs available. I've got about 10 left if anybody wants a yard sign to help get the message out there as well. We're having a fundraiser in support of Measure G on October 17th. It's a drive-in movie at Roner Park. It's going to be Beetlejuice. I think the parking lot's going to open at 6:30. The movie starts at 8:00. You can set up your chairs in the back of your truck bed or any other creative way you can think of to watch it, but we're going to have a raised screen so that you should be able to see it from just sitting in your car. There'll be snacks there, popcorn, sodas, water, candy bars, probably a few things like that. So we've got a few tickets already sold, so we'll hope you see that on Facebook and click on the link to buy your ticket and show up for that fun event, something, get out of the house with your kids. And for the council, we need to do merits evaluation, so look for some information coming on that fairly soon and we'll get that thing care of and amongst all of this other craziness that we're working on. So I think that's it. Anybody else have anything? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn our meeting. Oh, I guess you guys, Tammy?
Motion to adjourn?
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn our meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.